For the pledge of allegiance. And begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for it to stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we're not going to have an invocation today, we will just be seated. And Denise, if we could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Ponce.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here.
And for the record, we have our city attorney, Scott Campbell, on Zoom. Okay. And Mayor, I'd just like to make sure that the public is aware that they have some oral communication and they'd like to address the city council on an agenda item in person by practicing social distancing while waiting in the city courtyard and entering the chambers one at a time at the appropriate time. They may do so.
Okay. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have received two written communications and I believe all the council was copied on them, and that is regarding item number five on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. And so I have a written communication, so Chief Craig, if you would please come to the podium. I'm not sure which way I should be standing, but anyway, this is a proclamation of the city of Avalon honoring Michael Kragg for his 20 years of service with the city of Avalon. Whereas Michael Kragg became employed by the city of Avalon as a firefighter engineer on April 7th, 2001, in October 2003, Mike rose to the position of fire captain as was responsible for a crew of firefighters and providing training, direction, supervision, and mentoring to fellow firefighters to stay safe while on the job. In 2011, Mike was promoted to assistant fire chief and then to fire chief in, you remember what year?
2014.
That's it. As fire chief, Mike assumes full management responsibility for comprehensive fire protection, planning, and fire prevention, manages and administers safety training for all fire personnel, monitors changes in laws, regulations, fire safety management, and technology that affect city operation, and manages the city emergency operations center. During this time of the city, Mike attended courses from the National Fallen Firefighters' Foundation, the National Fire Academy, and the International Association of Fire Chiefs, and continuously worked to stay current on all operational fire service disciplines. Mike was instrumental in the fire department's fire ISO rating getting reduced from six to four, placing the city of Avalon Fire Department in its top 25% of fire departments nationwide, as well as securing numerous grants. Mike was involved in many events which included the May Fire of 2007, Hurricane Marie 2014, Whatever USA 2015, and the Valentine's Day Winter Storm 2017, to name a few. Whereas the leadership of our city will greatly miss the active participation of Mike in the day-to-day operation, as he will retire with a successful career in municipal service effective May 4th, 2021. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Avalon would like to extend Chief Craig our deep appreciation for his exemplary service to our community, and our best wishes for continued success in all of your future endeavors, dated April 20th by the Avalon City Council. Congratulations.
Well, sure, I could say a little something. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I just found out recently through the stroke of a key that there's a surprise party for me tomorrow as well, but so, anyway, thank you very much for all your kind words. I just made a couple notes that this is obviously my last city council meeting, and I did some quick math the other day and calculated that I've spent somewhere in excess of 300 meetings in here and more than 1,200 hours. Many of that with, much of that with you. I just want to express my extreme gratitude to everyone, city staff, friends, colleagues, and my family, many who happily fall into all those categories. Since my arrival on the island in 1995, I've received support, assistance, and camaraderie day in and day out. I personally feel that one of our greatest assets is the fact that because of our island locations, many times, we have to figure things out and wear many hats. And as such, we build these amazing teams of talented, resourceful people who operate day in and day out as quiet professionals. I'd like to specifically thank not only my staff, but all of our city staff for their support and sacrifice throughout the years, many times sacrificing time with their families and friends because of a response need, both emergency and assigned. It's with bittersweet emotions that I depart the island and the Avalon Fire Department, particularly that my career's been bookmarked by historic events that changed many things in our daily life, 9/11 early in my career, and now the COVID pandemic. I'm excited about this new chapter in my life in transitioning into the private sector in an emergency management role, but I know that no matter what, I won't be able to have the real day-to-day impact with people who are tied together in a close-knit community. We have an expression at the station that one of the great things about working here is you get to have impact with people that you know. One of the worst things about living here is that you have impact with people that you know. Overtown, that's the exception for emergency responders, and here, it's the rule that many times you find yourself on scene with people and friends and family. I am extremely proud of our transition from the ISO 6 to an ISO 4 and putting us in that small elite category of about 25%. The Chief Alegria is well-prepared for the task ahead of him during these historic times, and I know he'll receive the same support that I have. So with that, I express my most sincere thanks to everyone. It feels so privileged to have worked here, not only in a position within the fire department, but in a position of leadership. Thank you very much.
Wait, you have a chief of gravity picture.
Please.
Can we get all the gentleman's stuff? How old is this guy?
Three seconds.
You just want to speed him up. Okay. I'm sure that... We'll have a pop hammer. Okay, can we split the mask down for just a second? What do you think, Chief?
What's the question?
Down for one second?
Can you do a quick one?
Okay, okay, ready? Look at press. One, two, three.
So they're not superheroes, they're firefighters.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. What are we doing with these?
Come on, drop on those, please.
Don't worry, we're not getting a cupcake either, so don't feel bad.
Okay. Department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, got three items to report out. We had, we started work on, or we finished up the in-ground work of our saltwater booster station valve repair this week. The valve at the saltwater booster station on Crescent Avenue that has been excavated here this last week has been replaced yesterday with a new isolation valve. This valve was decades old and was in poor shape. We found it to be in poor shape when we got it out of the ground. This valve allows the isolation of the system near the station, and it's critical to the safety of personnel performing repairs where they're within the subsurface vault at that booster station. Baffeting field operations will continue this week, and then we'll finish that up and put the pavers on. And additionally, separate from that, we had a saltwater main break that was on Crescent Avenue at the lower terrace intersection there. Friday morning, a 90-degree ductile iron elbow failed at that intersection and had, was quite a break until we got it turned off. Public Works crew, in conjunction with Montrose Engineering staff, worked from 8:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. that night to excavate and make repairs to the system. What seemed like was pretty easy repair to start was pretty difficult to chase down and find that elbow, and it was right underneath. So you can imagine a very big ductile iron elbow that had a hole underneath it, and so you couldn't see that. And part of that pressure pipe facilities, one way that was restrained that, and especially on that hillside, they're encased in concrete. So it's very tedious excavation as we find that, excavate that concrete very slowly and piece by piece, and then find what is wrong with it, and then start the repairs. So that had all the water shut off in that side of town. And then additional work were required to replace some of the other components in that one area, because it had some couplings and other valves and stuff, and all that needs to be done. All of this facility up in that area is like 50 years plus old, so once we get it uncovered with the concrete, is excavated out as we're chasing it down, it's time to replace whatever that we do uncover, and then before we put it back and encase it back in concrete to protect it. And then, third item is Mole Phase 2, the environmental document. We've got a notice of intent to adopt a mitigated NEG deck for that project that's published now and is circulating, and the comment period was from April 9th to May 10th. And we're scheduled to be on the Planning Commission's agenda to adopt that on the 19th of May. So you can get, you can view that document the easiest way is to get it on the city of Avalon homepage. Go to the right-hand corner of that homepage, it says capital improvement projects. There are some links for projects, and that project is Cabrillo Mole Revitalization Phase 2 Environmental Docs. And that's how you would view that and be able to make comments. Any questions?
I do, about the Mole Phase 2. I guess I still have some fundamental problems with, okay, so review and revisions. So, I mean, what kind of revisions could we possibly make?
It, as I explained in the community meeting, and that was just the start of the public process of engaging with the public, but it was, that it could be a project this big, not this phase. This phase right now is that pie-shaped wedge that is not in the water, that has surface, you know, like concrete pavers, the buildings, the parking lot. That's what the scope of this project is. And then also to redo, like floats two and three also.
Right.
Then, but don't take this a small view, take a holistic view as we're going through that, so that we're not misstepping and building something that would be in the way of some of the future phase. That's why when you saw those concepts roll out in that community meeting, we had other areas that were potential for future phases that as we find other funding, other federal, state, or private, public-private partnership type funding, or just pay-as-you-go, that we could build those phases and make it really that special sense of place, iconic, you know, when the first thing you see when you come to Catalina and the last thing you see, and then how, you know, we invite you to, with all those visitor amenities that you're there, when you're interfacing with the transportation, the baggage handling, the queuing on the line, off, off, you know, getting on the boat, off the boat, you know, food amenities, amenities to have a good time, or just hanging out space, so.
But I guess, I'm sorry, I, but, okay, you're talking about review and revisions. Well, really, there's no room for revisions at this point, because if you're already saying it's going to the Planning Commission in the first week in June or whatever, I don't know, first of all, then, because if we came up with something wonderful, I mean, it sounds like, okay, the bathrooms are going to be in the same place. It's going to be basically the same with maybe a restaurant and maybe some kind of patio out, and I'm thinking, what's so wonderful about that? I mean, I think it needs, like I have been saying the whole time, unless we have the whole picture with, from the park to the ramp to the whatever, I don't know how we can say, and then we can add this stuff later, because we don't even know what that stuff is. So it seems like we need a master plan for that whole site, and then to say, this is what we do first, because this is what we have money for, but without a master plan on that whole area, I can't see your vision, because I don't see a vision.
Okay, so there'll be more public comment, and we're going through, what we are proposing is to go to get a broad enough environmental document that allows us to do some replacement of existing facilities, okay? Those will be further defined when we get an RFP out, so get a proposal from design-build firms. There will be other public input into what that will actually be in the final design during that design-build process, which could take another year in it. But the most important point is that there was some old funding of the federal funding, about $4 million worth, that needed to be moved on to the construction phase. To move on to the construction phase, we need to get the environmental document done, and that's part of the federal process. To be able to do that, then that gets us into where that movie, that money moves in to that construction phase. It can be now rolled over. Until we make that progress, we can't move it.
Okay.
So, you know, there's some things here that are not apparent. I keep on saying them, but they're not real apparent to somebody that doesn't do the federal projects, that you need to make, go through these gateways and make progress, or they won't allow you to move on. So that's why we're taking the design-build concept and moving it on, and you'll see a lot of the final design happen then. We will engage with the public again through another community meeting here soon, because we've been meeting with stakeholders. We just had another meeting yesterday, and it was a good meeting, and there are some good concepts that came out of that.
And who are those stakeholders that you're meeting with, just for my knowledge?
So we're trying to meet with the land transportation, we're meeting with, like, the island company, we're meeting with individual stakeholders that come, we'll meet with anybody that wants to come up and talk to, meet with the cross-channel carriers.
Have you already met with them?
I have not met with the cross-channel carriers yet.
Now, don't you think that would have been one of the first things to happen since this is who comes in there, and to not have included them in the dialogue?
And I don't want to interrupt. I just wanted to provide a little bit of context, because I think there's a little bit of miscommunication. The first part of that is the environmental process that we're going is going to help to streamline a lot of this, and so it's just getting those regulatory processes out of the way, so, one, we can move forward a little bit more expeditiously with this project, disencumber some of those old funds, and then move forward with the actual project. The second part of that is, we are right now just in the discovery phase, if you will, soliciting some community input, getting some initial ideas, and asking for what their thoughts are on the project, some of the concepts as presented. Those comments are already being incorporated into new revisions, and they're informing the next reiteration of what those plans are going to be. We've gotten some really strong feedback from some of our individual stakeholders who have come back and actually proposed a different set of plans and designs and thought processes, so that it's a functional building that's looked at and developed with more of a sense of place than we originally had presented. Part of those, too, is those communications and those community meetings and those stakeholder meetings, while we have not reached out to every single sector yet, they've also been talking amongst themselves, they've been collaborating, they've been communicating those ideas, and then we've been meeting with certain people. So we had a meeting with one stakeholder who brought together some of the transportation priorities from other meetings that they have already had, too. So this is by far not the end-all-be-all within this process. This is just to start the dialogue, start getting some feedback, moving forward, so that we can move forward with this project, and we've already talked both informally and formally with other, other community members and other stakeholders, and we will be soliciting even more in the months to come.
Oh, I can appreciate that. Again, I just think, because it just seemed like those serious conversations should have happened a long time ago with all of those people, before we even had the drawings that we had.
And some of those did take place, and they were incorporated into the initial phase of the discussion, but it's not anywhere near what the final design is. We just need to start that process so that we can move forward, but we're going to go, continue to go more in-depth dialogue-wise with the community and with the sectors in order to come up with a plan, one, that creates community buy-in and a sense of place, and two, really meets the broader needs of both the community as well as individual sectors.
So I think it's important to note that, like Catalina Express, they have been at those other stakeholder meetings, like the Chamber of Commerce, okay, so.
But I don't think you've met with Greg Bombard.
They were represented at that meeting, and I will talk with Greg Bombard, you know.
No, he hasn't said anything to me, but I've spoken to other people that say some of the stakeholders have not really been involved, and.
Not yet.
And again, the thing that we only had before was that silly thing document we did, where the lady says, what do you want to see at the mall? Well, someplace to plug in my phone, and I want some shade, and that was it. But my concern is more like, because I asked the other day about, the last time you presented it, was about the bathrooms, you know, well, you know, and you've got Little Ellie's Deli there, and you've got whatever, and is there going to, how do you open that, how do you open it up to what potentially could be, because somebody might say, I love the Long Beach Airport, and you go there, and there's all these adorable little places to eat that are well-covered and whatever, you know, and things about baggage handling, how we, you know, that kind of stuff.
That is coming, that is coming.
But you told me the bathrooms are still going to be where the bathrooms are? We're just going to redo the bathrooms?
So what we have now is something to start the discussion, okay? And if we don't have it laid out and for somebody to point at different possibilities, then we have a team of design professionals that sketched out what could be some possibilities. But what we keep saying is, don't let us tell you what it's going to be, community, tell us what it is, we're here to facilitate it. And so that's what we rolled out there, is like, here it is, here's some things to point at. Now stakeholders, I keep on inviting you, come on, come and tell us what you think of what's your space. Do you like the way this operates? No. Do you like it? Yes. Okay? And then from there, we make changes. And even from, to the point, what's this thing going to look like? And we said, here's some, what it looks like in shape and size.
Right.
And here, we put some software to it and said, oh, it kind of looks like something that fits in the island, but don't let us tell you what that's going to be, because we don't want to tell you. We want to hear what you want, and we want to deliver that, what you want. And that's what we're attempting to do. You're going to see a lot of the details that happen in the design come in the design-build element, okay? And that's when a contractor and a design firm get together and deliver that project, okay? And it's all one team. It's not where you design it, and then you go out there and bid it, and then maybe don't get built, or you build it for maybe something that's not within your budget even, you know, so.
And when do we create that public-private partnership? Because we're not going to have a lot of money. At what point is that put out to the world that, hey, because if they knew that there was a possibility to be building something or whatever, they might come on board now and want to help design?
So we're hearing that there is some possibilities, that people are already interested, and we're investigating those now.
But have we put that out, or that's just people that kind of raised their hand?
No, we've already had those conversations with some of our stakeholders, and they have already told us that there are some very interested investors who would be willing to engage. It's just too far, too early in the process yet in order to move forward with that, because right now, we haven't solidified really what that building is going to look like, what types of amenities are going to be. Once we get to that point, we're already lining them up, and we'll continue to have those dialogues in a much more meaningful way.
Yeah, because they should be wanting to see what this preliminary thing is, because they may say, wait a minute, but we want to get involved, but this isn't what we want. And how many times do we redo things? I mean, those plans didn't, those plans weren't cheap. I'm sure we paid for those through a grant or something, and then, I guess, I don't understand process well enough to say, you know, here's a blank slate, erase the slate, like I've been saying, and you design from a flat surface looking down, this is what we have to work with, instead of, it just seems like it's much of the same, and I understand then you've got to go and do the environmental, but you have to redo the environmental if you come up with a plan that's different than the one you have now.
As long as we stay within the scope that's in the initial study of what we said that we were going to do, no.
Yeah, right now, we're bound by the parameters of the project, because, one, that's dictated by the funding. So the funding is already said, we're not going to fund anything that goes beyond the mole structure. We can't go into the water in this round, and there are things that we can do to phase it out, and might make a little bit more financial sense to phase into that project. Part of that could be redoing the parking structure or the parking lot. That might be a priority, but it might not necessarily be the first priority for this round of funding. The other thing that we could phase are things like the covered shelter amenities that are along the floats one, two, three, and four. Right now, we're just trying to get a better definition of what the scope is, what the community's priorities are, and then we want to then take that information, continue to refine the design, solicit additional feedback from the community, and then get it to the point where we can hand it over and get a design-build firm on board, and then start engaging these private, private-public partnerships, these separate investors to say, look, you know, here's, here's the defined vision that fits the community needs, there's some opportunity, this isn't 100% fleshed out, but it's fleshed out enough where now it might make sense for you, from a financial standpoint, to want to come in, invest some additional monies, and to contribute to the full build-out of that structure. And that's really kind of the next piece of that, but we need to get, in order for us to get there, we have to have those environmental documents finished, and it's a requirement that's a part of the funding, otherwise we end up losing the money, and we don't want to jeopardize that.
I totally agree. Well, I'll talk offline to you two again, because I have some other comments, and I'll just, sorry I ranted, but I'm just.
Yes, and to be transparent, yes, we invite you in, and we invite everybody in the public and in the community in to come talk with us.
Yeah.
We want to share and make it your project.
So, okay, just one quick question, when we talk again, okay, so we had the transportation people here last council meeting, right? And then we're doing the five corners, and then we're doing complete streets and multimodal and whatever, and then all we're looking to do is find parking and a place where all those vehicles can go down there and do what they're doing now. And I don't know where, how all of that fits in to the multimodal and everything else we're doing, so that will be a discussion we can have, okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Oh, boy. That was just one department head. I'll be nice to you, Orin.
Okay, in lighter news. So Orin Karst-Darfin, Avalon Harbor Master, so this week.
know, here's the defined vision that fits the community needs. There's some opportunity. This isn't 100% fleshed out, but it's fleshed out enough where now it might make sense for you, from a financial standpoint, to want to come in, invest some additional monies, and to contribute to the full build-out of that structure." And that's really kind of the next piece of that, but we need to get, in order for us to get there, we have to have those environmental documents finished, and it's a requirement that's a part of the funding. Otherwise, we end up losing the money, and we don't want to jeopardize that.
I totally agree. Well, I'll talk offline to you two again, because I have some other comments, and I'll just, sorry I ranted, but I'm just-
Yes, and to be transparent, yes, we invite you in, and we invite everybody in the public and in the community in to come talk with us. We want to share and make it your project.
So, okay, just one quick question. When we talk again, okay, so we had the transportation people here last council meeting, right? And then we're doing the five corners, and then we're doing complete streets and multimodal and whatever. And then all we're looking to do is find parking and a place where all those vehicles can go down there and do what they're doing now. And I don't know where, how all of that fits in to the multimodal and everything else we're doing. So that will be a discussion we can have, okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Oh, boy. That was just one department head. I'll be nice to you, Orin.
Okay, in lighter news. So Orin Karstarfen, Avalon Harbor Master. So this week, we moored about 163 boats for a total of 424 nights for another busy weekend. Dinghy dock space, unbelievably, we had plenty of space available, as we did install the club dinghy dock and put that into service unusually early this year. But we are prepared, we can remove it if the weather changes for the worse. And on that note, we are monitoring the weather conditions as we see a possibility of rain this week, and forecast for increased swell activity out of the south toward the weekend. So if you do have your dinghy on a dinghy dock, make sure to check it, make sure it's secured properly. Also in service this week, Dave Carlton has resumed his mobile pump ahead service, so that'll be for the whole summer season. He'll be back in service. If you need his phone number, you can call us at the harbor office, and we can provide that for you. Otherwise, he can be reached on VHF channel 68. And other, our other float, the In-Float, is scheduled to be towed back to Avalon around the 26th of this month. So we'll be preparing that to go back on probably around Cinco de Mayo, around May 5th, and then we'll see the shoreboat float be attached to that. And that's all I have.
Great. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Joe Badali, Captain, the Sheriff's Department. We are continuing to experience an increase in calls for service due to the increase in tourism, and proud to report, we have not had an increase in our Part 1 crimes during this time as well. Last week, we served two search warrants. The first was a state and federal offender that was taken into custody, and the second one was over town, where we recovered about a half a million dollars' worth of misappropriated property and returned it to the rightful owner. And also proud to share that Sheriff Villanueva is visiting the island on May 4th, and he will be touring throughout the city and the island. And at 5:00 PM, he'll be here in council chambers to meet with members of the community and also discuss different things going on over town and as it affects the department. And so we welcome him. I've provided tentative schedule to the city manager, who will provide that to you guys as well. And that's all I have.
That's very nice. Any questions for the captain? Okay, right now, we're good. Thank you so much. And here comes our finance director.
Evening, Mayor, Council. I just want to remind the public that there is a public hearing scheduled for June 1st at the June 1st council meeting for sewer, saltwater, and solid waste rates. Notices were mailed last week to all property owners. For additional information on the rate study and how, if adopted, it would impact rates, if you want, you can go to www.cityofavalon.com/assessments. I'm going to share the screen here with the public just one second. So I pulled up on the website, again, cityofavalon.com/assessments. I've included links to the Prop 218 notice, as well as the presentation that was given at the last council meeting and the individual analyses that went into that presentation. There's also a feature that I just want to draw the public's attention to, that if you do want to look up what your current assessments are, or what the proposed assessments would be based on the current cost-of-service study to be presented at the June 1st public hearing, you can search either by your parcel number or your AIN number, or by your street address. So if we go by street address, you can then select what year you'd be interested in. So next year is our fiscal year '22, beginning July 1st, 2021, so it would be the, of course, it does this. It's working earlier today.
You should have stopped at assessments.
I should have. So there is a way to look up, and if there's-
Well, probably because you didn't have an address.
That might have been the issue, but if the public has any issue accessing the database, they can always reach out to the finance department that can pull the information for them as well. I just wanted to draw attention to where that information can be found for the public. I will provide a reminder in every meeting up until that June 1st date. Then lastly, I just wanted to provide a quick revenue update. We've received visitor-driven revenue figures through the month of February. February numbers are approximately half of what the pre-COVID February numbers were last year. That's in line with where we had estimated in the budget, and actually slightly better than what I had used as an estimate for the prior council meeting. While I try not to get too excited until all the numbers come in, early indications show March is going to beat the 50% estimate we had in the budget, and hopefully it beats it by a considerable amount. But again, it's, those numbers are still coming in, so I don't want to get anyone's hopes too up, but there are promising signs that revenues are rebounding.
Great. That's good news.
So with that, if there are any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
All right.
But thank you, Matt.
Welcome.
Michael Alagria, Captain, Fire Department. A couple things. Yesterday, we did a photo shoot with Mercier. They landed up above the Joe Machado, and we took a photo with all our agencies, minus one. But the lady wanted to comment how, "Wow, you guys all work here?" Like, she wrote, "Every photo is Mercier and one company, but ours, we had the sheriffs, county fire, us, and Baywatch was there as well." So they just commented on how, "Wow, you guys all work together and get along?" "Yep, every day. That's what we do." I had a couple of Zoom meetings today. One was union stuff, and another one was on the American Rescue Plan Act, on things of how to get recovery, how to recover funds from COVID for fire departments. And I got a link that I'm going to share with Matt on ways we could get 100% some funds back for all expenses for COVID during this time, for the fire department. And it was also, they also touched on a couple of grants that we have to apply for. So I'll get with Audra and Denise about that, of what grants they told us to apply for, and then just remind everybody about brush clearance.
Yes. And what's the deadline on weed abatement?
June 1st.
June 1st. Okay. Excellent. Any tough questions for our new fire chief? Come on, somebody throw something out there.
No, I just wanted to say, congratulations, Chief Alagria, and welcome to the team.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, we're very proud of you.
Very proud.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council. Just a few updates from the Community Services Department. With a special thanks to the Catalina Island Yacht Club, we were able to kick off our Wild World of Sports program this past Sunday. We had 29 kids of different age groups come out. There are going to be different sports each week. The first three are going to be Sundays, the next, following three are going to be on Saturdays. But this past week, Dave Hart led them through frisbee golf, frisbee soccer out at Joe Machado Field. I think next week, they're going to do kickball, and then each week will be a little different. Not too late to sign up. We're just one week into it for a six-week program, but if you were to contact the office, we could assist you with that. We're also taking registrations for our T-ball sluggers program that starts Saturday, May 8th, so three-year-olds to eight-year-old boys and nine-year-old girls. That'll be Saturdays, I think seven consecutive Saturdays starting May 8th. Taking registrations now for that. Also, Tuesday of next week, so a week from tonight, April 27th, I will be hosting. Years past, we've done it in here, an outrigger informational meeting. It's going to be on Wrigley Stage. We're going to do it outside, we're going to be social distance, so if you had any interest in the club, want to know anything about it, love to have you out. It's 5:30 on Wrigley Stage at 7 on April 27th. You are starting to see some work, more work happening at the starter dog park. You can kind of start to see the framework come together. This, the rest of the week, we'll kind of be cleaning the side up a little bit more. Next week, we'll get the rest of the posts in. Today, we started putting some of the mesh in. We'd had dog owners come by and go, "How are you going to keep those dogs in that split rail fencing?" And we're going to border it with some meshing, and so coming together. I think we're picking up some amenities. We've got benches and trash containers and those things that just arrived on the island, so we're picking up those, we can get those out. We're still planning on a May 1st, Saturday, May 1st opening. We should be able to hit that, and I think we're just going to do a soft opening. We're just going to, one day it's not open, next day it's going to be open, just so we don't draw too big of a crowd. But we'll, we'll put something down on Facebook just to confirm that the May 1st, Saturday, we'll have that open. And then lastly, Thursday, you will see an olive tree, a beautiful olive tree that was donated by the Rotary. Go on to Wrigley Stage. It's going to be there for a 30-day, 30-ish day period of time, and it's going to be part of a wish program. So wish program, you can go up to the tree at any point. There'll be little note cards there that you can hang, there'll be some signage, and you can put a, you know, a wish, whatever it might be. It could be good health, it could be getting out of COVID, it could be, you know, whatever it might be. And we're going to hang those for a 30-day period of time, and then that tree will eventually plant it. We've lost some olive trees, you know, over the years, so again, Rotary has done a beautiful job in helping us replace one of those trees that we've lost. And then those trees are documented. They all go into a national database, and they're archived as part of this wish program. So there'll be more signage starting probably Saturday. Earth Day is on Thursday. We thought we'd get it out on Earth Day, and then Saturday, I think by then, the signage will be out, and that will kind of start that month period of time where you can write your wishes and hang them from the tree there. So with that, unless you've got any questions, that's my report.
Is there community cleanup this Saturday?
That's mine.
Yes, we are doing a tag team, so he was going to take that one.
Yes, Rotary will be, and the city will be doing its monthly community cleanup, 9:00 at the kids' park across the street. Please come out and enjoy. We're doing it this weekend to coincide with Earth Day.
Nice.
And the wishing tree. That was all tied in together.
Oh, nice. So, you know, there's that nasty tree in front of, like Steve's and Maggie's. I believe that's, is that an olive tree as well?
Yes.
And is that the one, does this still have all those nasty cockroaches in it? Remember Denise? So anyway, if that's the case, that might be where you want to place that tree, clean that whole thing out, and if, because it's nasty.
Yeah, I think we've got quite a trunk structure there that's going to take a little bit more time than we might have to do that now, but yeah, that's just, you know, dry-rotted, you know, trunk structure there and what's causing that. So at some point, we do need to get, kind of dig all that out. Yes.
Just a suggestion.
We've got plenty of places to put beautiful trees, so-
Yeah, I know.
We've got one in mind.
Council, any comments or questions? City Manager report.
Annie, I need to pass. I left my notes at my desk.
And I had a quick update.
I was coming to you.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Mike Palmer, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to provide a very brief update on kind of where we're at with COVID. The new case rates, or the new data just got posted by the State of California Department of Public Health. Right now, our adjusted case rate has dropped down slightly to 2.7, and we are currently at 1.2% for our positivity rate. That is the seven-day average. Also, I just wanted to remind everybody that that still qualifies us for the orange-tier status, and as such, the Health Officer Order that is currently in effect is still in effect. They have revised this as of April 14th. It is effective as of the 15th of April. The biggest change that comes from this revision is a couple things. The first one is that it adds some new reopening protocols for indoor-seated live events and performances. It also adds reopening protocols for private events, and how they define private events is with meetings, receptions, and conferences. It also adds guidance for informal social gatherings, which replaces the prior guidance for private gatherings. This is really important, and there is some distinct distinctions between informal social gatherings and private events, namely, the fact that informal social gatherings do not have any defined guest list. They don't involve meetings, conferences, or receptions, or other ceremony or performances. They do have to follow certain protocols. If they do, then they are considered private events. They've got different protocols and different thresholds. Just for clarification, too, the informal social gatherings, they have a maximum of 50 people that can attend in outdoor gathering spaces and a maximum of 25% occupancy where capacity limits exist, or 25 people, whichever is fewer. I do want to note, though, that the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health still very strongly discourages indoor gatherings of any size. One, because that is where the most risk is for catching COVID, especially in confined spaces with poor ventilation, so they do continue to discourage that. We'll have the information disseminated out, and we'll work with Jim Lutjehan over at the chamber to make sure that gets disseminated to our business community, but I just wanted to provide some clarification for that, so thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Does our city attorney have anything to add?
No reports tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember reports.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Trash pickup, once again. Rotary and the City of Avalon working together to do that, 9:00, kids' park. I did attend Cal City's policy committee meetings this last week. Long day, but very interesting. There is legislation being written in regards to TOT collection, that a new department be formed, and that they will collect TOT and then give it to the cities. Not thrilled with that at all. It was, the vote from the committee was to oppose unless amended. And then the other was with community services, there's legislation coming out in regards to tabletop emergency planning and training, and that is also in support, but they also would like to have amendments to it, depending on the cost to the cities, if they're going to require the cities to be involved, because right now, they're opening it up to the state and Cal Fire and all emergency departments, looking at maybe adding school districts, but bringing the whole community in to do tabletop training on emergency services. What they were talking about is earthquake, tsunami, major fire. They're talking mass casualties, not just an event happening, but they're looking at who's going to bear the cost of doing this. State has a fun habit of mandating and not paying. And then, it's just one of my rants, and I would like to get from the express or from someone as to why commuter books expire. If somebody buys a gift certificate in the state of California, it never expires. If you've bought a service, it doesn't expire. And I would like to know why our ticket books expire.
Michael, I believe it was in their CPUC.
And I understand it's part of the, but when, I just want to know why, especially after COVID, why all these ticket books are no longer, you, it's just been one of my bugaboos about.
If anybody in the community has a ticket book that has expired and has tickets in it, if they would contact City Hall, I will give them a contact information for the Catalina Express. Depends on how many tickets are in it, as well as in- Express, depends on how many tickets are in it, as well as in, now COVID, COVID is a different situation, Michael, but the commuter, it, it's because you commute, so why would you get a commuter book if you're not gonna travel the five round trips to the mainland, would be my first argument to you, but COVID is a totally different thing, and I know the Express is willing to, to work with an individual, it all depends on the circumstances, so it isn't a hard no.
But, but my, my issue goes back to, why do they expire it?
In my, my understanding is part of that is tied to the funding, and what we can utilize that funding for and the expiration on that, but we can get clarification on that.
It, it's just that, they get paid, you buy, you buy a commuter book, they get paid, and we're out, you know, they get, they're part of that commuter book, we paid for part of that commuter book, that we don't, we don't get the benefit.
We'll bring that back again, Councilmember Ponse, for clarification again.
Okay, thank you, and that's just my rant, it's just, I, it's just, just one of those things.
I understand.
That's all.
Okay. Lisa?
Sure, so I attended the Community Math meeting that the museum held, which was the result of a series of group studies, and was just interesting how the museum is interacting with education specifically in Avalon, and what their goals are to do there, also, attended a meeting with Long Beach City College and the Chamber of Commerce regarding potential funding from Long Beach City College through Congressman Lowenthal's office, talking about programs that would assist students, and students broadly defined in both the sense of first-time college students and/or returning or continuing education students from the community of Avalon, to attend classes online and receive assistance with funding, and/or to attend classes in person, and potentially receive assistance with funding for transportation from the island to the mainland, from the port to the campus, so, very encouraged, we were able, with the assistance, to be able to provide a letter of support for that, thank you for signing that, and then also, attended another connectivity group, and have had a lot of developments that are all waiting to drop, so, I'm hoping to have more information soon, but, a number of the entities that we've been working with, including Verizon, Catalina Broadband, and other private contractors, have mentioned now, actual steps to take, the potential for processes to start happening is huge, we're hoping this week to have another meeting, actually, sorry, a week from tomorrow, and that during that meeting, we can discuss what the next steps are to try to get people in the room together and see what comes of that, to give a very fast lowdown background, it looks like a $250,000 price mark to start getting the reports together, and then be able to go from there, once those reports are ready, to be able to move to funding sides of things, three quarters of a million dollars to do the funding, 10 to 12 million dollars to do the additional work, so, most of that will need to come from grant funding, or all of that, I should say, would need to come from grant funding, or public-private partnership potentially, but encouraging to hear actual real numbers, the potential to move things forward, and hopefully some solutions, with a lot of other work helping improve services already, so, it's, it's more encouraging than it was at the beginning of the conversations, which is great. I think that's it for meetings, regarding upcoming events and things to cover, Mayor, I know that you will be on the mainland due to some time needed over there, so not doing the minutes with the mayor tomorrow, just wanted to bring to everyone's attention the Water Talks survey, if you could go to watertalks.la, and that is a survey for residents of Avalon worried about water runoff, drought, groundwater, and a whole host of environmental impacts that we have in the, in the city of Avalon, with the goal ultimately of providing details from a community sentiment survey that would then allow us to receive additional Prop 1 funding, so Prop 1, again, is the proposition in the state that allows us to receive funding for water in a number of different ways, and also, is part of being labeled as a disadvantaged community because of certain requirements, we're able to have access to this survey, and be able to potentially receive additional Prop 1 funding, and then if you are looking for that in Spanish, there is translation on the site, or you can go to tinyurl.com/agualala, A-G-U-A-L-A, so either one of those options, we're hoping to at least receive 40 responses, and the, the, the number of people that have provided responses already is coming in, we did have them present at the Love Catalina Tourism Authority meeting this past week, and had a number of questions from business owners and operators in that, that meeting, and hopefully we'll see some more responses, so again, that's watertalks.la, or tinyurl.aguaala, and those need to be done before the end of the month, by April 30th.
Right.
And then finally, Yessenia had mentioned last meeting, a number of meetings coming up regarding the census, which we're still looking forward to having those numbers sent in, the final numbers are expected to come out in September of this year, but already, there has been some changes in how redistricting is done in California, specifically that for county redistricting, they are now creating an independent, community-led board, the board was seated prior to our council being seated, so I'm not sure if anyone ever had any interaction about wanting to be on that board or not, but, we received an update from Gaila from the redistricting, she's on the executive committee for the redistricting for Los Angeles County, this past Thursday, they're having, I believe, meeting number 10 right now, and meeting number 11 takes place next Wednesday at 7 o'clock, they will have additional meetings in May, June, and July, so if you go to redistricting.lacounty.gov, you can sign up for updates, and check out the meeting schedule, you can see the past meetings that have happened, the first few meetings I saw were anywhere from two to three hours in duration, so just plan for some time if you're gonna watch those, but good information to learn and know, and the goal of the redistricting ultimately is to make districts that are fair in terms of representation and geography, and, so looking at that, I think it would be wise for us, I don't know if we have anyone that's attended those meetings, or has provided any input to the redistricting commission yet, there's a commission of 14 people, if we've had any interaction with them yet?
We have not.
Okay, so I don't know if it's possible for us to either, I don't know if we have a position that we need to supply to that redistricting commission, because it's independent, I don't know that if they're allowed to ask that or seek that from us as a city, but as independent individuals, we can interact with them.
Oh, interesting.
Right, so, that's all we've got, I believe.
That's great.
Oh yeah, and then definitely do the cleanup this weekend, that'll be fun, so.
Okay, Yessenia or Cindy?
I have nothing to report today. Okay, I do, I have a couple things.
Good.
Well, with the week starting off, definitely have some meetings to attend, I do have two tomorrow, one being with the California Contract Cities, it will be a Board of Directors meeting, as well as the county, I will attend the, it's a hotels, an event, a telebriefing, and then as well, on Friday, there's a city official county telebriefing, but something that I'm very, very excited about is an organization, organization that we've worked with before, the Long Beach Immigration Rights Coalition, they have helped us during the census, and they did help us gather about 40 families, and we gave them each $500, they recently reached out, and we're gonna be able to do that again, but this time it will be 25 families, so they will be getting that next month.
That's very good, okay, I just wanted to do a shout out to Jonah Sampson, that's, he's the son of Joe and Janie Sampson, as you might have heard, he got the Southern California Edison $40,000 grant, and it's kind of a STEM grant, science, technology, engineering, and math, so we wanna say, Jonah, congratulations, I know you worked hard, you are the third young person in Avalon to get that, and so, with a small school that we have, and in their whole service area, to have three of our local students get that, we're very honored, and we really thank you all, so, and he will be attending California, California Maritime Academy, so congratulations, and, and no minutes with the mayor tomorrow, I'm really sorry, I will see you next month, okay, alrighty, presentations, okay, oral communications, this is an opportunity for people in the community to address items that are not on the agenda, you, you will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken, so I see our librarian in the audience.
Hello, everybody, Paul Burchell, Avalon Library, I am delighted to say, I sent a letter last meeting, but I wanted to come in person, the library is open, I'm so excited, we are COVID safe, we've been given a county maximum occupancy of eight people, but that's enough.
Yeah.
Eight people can come in and have a good time, and I have to tell you, it's just been a joy to see people in the stacks, looking at the books, looking at the movies, using our computers, we have had to take out, to make sure everybody can maintain the six feet separation, we've taken out a couple of computers, we still have two, and all the Chromebooks, you can take out a Chromebook, use it in the courtyard with our free Wi-Fi, we still have printing, we still have Wi-Fi, and we also still have sidewalk service available for folks who don't wanna come into the library, I understand it absolutely, just call me, I'll come on out to the blue table in front, give you your books, help you place orders, whatever you need, so we have both services available, so the hours we're operating right now, no longer Tuesday to Saturday, it's Monday to Friday, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we'll be operating 10:00 in the morning till 6:00 PM, Tuesday, today, our late night, we operate from 1:00 till 8:00 PM, all these services are available, everything's working fine, the library looks fantastic, so come and see us, I also, with my last minute, I wanted to talk very quickly about a program we're just starting, we have partnered with a group called Growing Great, to offer a very nice STEM program, we have these big kits waiting for people to just come and grab them at the library, they're in concert with online classes for children, basically, about ecology, we have how seeds grow, how to dissect a seed, so you can see what's inside, and all of them, they have kits with all the, everything you need to like do scientific experiments, can't be two minutes already, and also, summer discovery program available, it's online, but you can pick up a sheet, give me the sheet, I'll enter you online, and we'll send you a present, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm so pleased to be back at the library.
I know, we are too, okay, there's nobody else for oral communication, we will go to the consent calendar.
There were four items on the consent calendar this evening, but we are removing item number one, the minutes, they have not been completed, so we have warrants for a total expenditure of $828,106.17, and that's for the time period of March 29th through April 9th, 2021, we have a resolution establishing the electric bicycle policy, and the fourth item on the agenda is consent, but it's as the city council acting as the Avalon Municipal House Board of Trustees, and we have the CEO report for February, March, and we have the CFO's January and February report, both of those are for the year of 2021.
Council, what's your pleasure?
Can I pull item four?
Yes.
For comment?
Oh, good, yes, I'm glad, okay, everybody's good on item three, the electric bike?
I'll make a motion to approve items one, excuse me, two and three.
I'll second.
Been moved in second, call for the vote, Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, the reason I pulled for was more of to make an announcement, that they are doing vaccination clinics every Thursday from 10 to 12, and every, adults are now all qualified, so, I just wanna let people know in, in the community to go up there and get your vaccinations, it's just, it's, they've done, and I also wanna give kudos to Medical Center, they have done an amazing job in keeping this community protected, the fact that we had 181 positives, and we have not had a positive since February is amazing, so, kudos to them, so, I make a motion to approve item number four.
I'll second. Moved in second, call for the vote.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Oh, Lisa.
Thank you. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponse?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
And just to heads up, Jason said he would be at the next meeting, he'll, he'll be at the next meeting, if anyone has questions or.
Okay. Okay, item number five?
Okay, we're moving on to general business, and just as this item has been placed on the agenda this evening, at the request of the Tuna Club, and we do have Eric Neuss in the audience, and I really would like him to come forward, and he can go through it.
Okay, come on forward, and John, it's nice to see you.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Marshall, members of the city council, members of Avalon city staff, first off, I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to be up here today, and spend a few moments with you, my name's Eric Neuss, I'm the 2021 president of the Avalon Tuna Club, back in March, we had sent a request to the city, and requesting to either, basically, to look at a new lease for a 20-year term with two 10-year options, we currently have a lease with the city that has one more year left until our final 10-year option, the reasoning for that was a couple-fold, primarily as we were doing capital planning, looking out the next five to 10 years, the, you know, the, the building itself has undergone quite a bit of construction, mostly on piling work, but some other kinda heavy lifting items, if you will, and just looking forward and planning ahead, we've, we've realized that this is not only a five to 10-year project, gonna be an ongoing project, not just with the pilings, but just keeping the building up, which is, you know, over 100 years old now, so, we think if you'd be willing to consider that, that it would be beneficial for the city in a variety of different ways, not only, you know, the upkeep and maintenance of the property, but also sort of a long-term view, you know, we very much believe that, you know, we are committed to the city, I mean, you know, we're an organization that values the city of Avalon, it's in our tradition, it's in our history, we support local businesses, we, we have a charitable arm that is, is very much committed to any kinda cause in Avalon that is a need, and we just think that a long-term lease would fit in line with not only the financial, but also some of the other commitments that I mentioned earlier, so, I appreciate the opportunity, and look forward to any questions.
Okay, and we had an opportunity to talk on the phone, thank you very much, Eric.
Yes.
One of the things that, I believe I asked you, and I also asked the city manager, it says in the contract that there will be maintenance updates provided annually to the city of Avalon, and I don't believe that has, Denise can?
That is correct.
Yeah, that has not been happening, we'd like to see that be reinstituted, I think it's important that the community kinda knows, and I know you, you guys don't toot, toot your own horn, but, horns, but, people ask me, well, what do they do, you know, we say, yeah, well, they maintain the building, and, you know, and, and they, the, when we tell them the $30,000 annual rental fee, they go, oh my God, what a deal, I'd love to have beachfront, you know, oceanfront property for $30,000 a year.
Understand.
And those are the kinda questions we get, and, and I think it's important that the community knows, besides, besides also knowing your charitable contributions, which we, we haven't been getting lists of, I don't believe, but it's, what it costs to operate that building?
Sure.
You know, you had shared with me, it's about $100,000 for insurance alone, and, and there's some other, you have expenses, you have payroll, you have all of those things, but I think for the community to kind of know those things, I'm not gonna put it on the front page of the paper, but, something that gives us some ammunition and ways to, to reply to people, I think. but something that gives us some ammunition and ways to reply to people, I think that's very, I think that's very important. And I also know in there, and we had mentioned that, you know, the different events that you allow to have there, like this, and it says in the lease, I didn't read the fine-tuning, the fine print today, but talks about what it's been used for and how it can be used by the public. So, anyway, those are just some basic comments I'd like to make for now. And if you can respond to any of those or...
I'd be happy to respond to all of them if time permits. As it relates to the cost, I certainly understand the lease thing. I'd love to have $3,000, $30,000, $40,000 a year beachfront property, too. The lease is, you know, what's called a triple net lease. So we are responsible for, you know, if you think of a, you rent an apartment from somebody and it needs a new paint job, it's not typically your responsibility, it's the landlord's. And if the water breaks, it's certainly not your responsibility. You know, as it relates to our lease, we are responsible for basically every dollar worth of construction, maintenance, and so on. So, to put that in some sort of hard-dollar terms, in the last five years, we've spent approximately $600,000 on piling work. I think it's 570,000, but... And that, you know, it's ebbed and flowed, you know, some years was bigger than others, but that's since 2016. That's just the piling work, the underside of the building. For a variety, obviously, we don't want it to fall into the water, there's a safety issue. You know, we love John, we don't want him waking up swimming one morning in the middle of the night. So, and that is an issue that, you know, with some of the weather that we've experienced, you know, in the history of Avalon, whether that's the nor'easter, St. Anne, or even the big south surge we had a few years ago. If those pilings aren't properly taken care of, it could be a very significant issue, both environmentally and obviously to the structure. In addition to that, you know, it is an old building, it's 100 years old. And so, painting, we have wood rot, we have, you know, your basic things as well. But it's almost like a boat. It just requires a lot of maintenance. We're completely happy doing that. We value the property. We very much appreciate, you know, our ability to occupy it with this, you know, from the city's standpoint. So, that's kind of on the sort of maintenance side, if you will. As it relates to other, you know, so we held events throughout the year and, you know, for the most part, a goal of ours is wherever we can, we want to source with local business. Restaurants, food and beverage, supplies, any kind of maintenance work, the shipyard. We think that's very important. I mean, there are certain things you just have to get over town. But for the most part, that is just an ethos of ours to make sure that we try to support local businesses where we are spending money, which is, you know, generally in the operations. Obviously, we have employment, you know, some of it's part-time. We have two full-time employees. And then, the third question, and then I'll circle back to sort of the reporting requirements. We do have a foundation, the Tuna Club Foundation. It is a separate organization. I mean, we are sort of tied at the hip, but I am not the president of that. Chase O'Field is this year. And the foundation's sort of got two goals, but, you know, the very beginning of the foundation, I believe, was to support trying to fix the hospital in the '70s when it was about to shut down.
Okay.
Since then, the goals of the foundation are to support conservation, but a lot of it is to support organizations within Avalon. Last year, I believe we spent a little bit over $36,000, not spent, but donated to the food bank, because that was clearly a pressing issue with the COVID situation last year. And on top of that, the foundation also has a relationship, well, it's not really the club does, but with the museum. So, from a public access standpoint, we have a docent program with the museum that has worked really nicely for the last, I believe, five or six years now. Last year, unfortunately, because of COVID, we had to stop it. But we just had communications today, and I think we're on track to get that started again. And then, your final question. We want to be an ally to the city and wherever we can, use the facility for events. Whether, I know historically, we've had some women's forums events there. I know we've hosted some events for the Conservancy Ball and a variety of other things. We absolutely are committed to doing that. So, thank you.
Well, great. Counsel, do you have any other questions first, Mr. Neuse? Is it noise, like N-O-I-S-E?
Uh, like no, yes, but it's pronounced noise.
Oh, okay, thank you. Councilmembers? If no questions, comments? Is everybody on mute?
I don't have any questions or comments. If we don't have any public comments, I could offer up some direction.
Okay. Michael, do we have anything?
I have no comments.
Okay. Counsel? Okay. The other thing that says, it talks about the CPI that's in there, and that is happening, that CPI is coming in every year?
Yes.
Okay. So really, the established lease payments are more than $3,000 a month based on the CPI over the last so many months, right? Or years?
Yes.
So it must be like, Matt, what's it up to now?
I should know this since I've...
I should have asked you, too. Oh, here comes Matt. Let's see, he's going to say he can let me know what.
Yeah, I think it's like...
Do you actually pay it on a monthly basis? Is that how it works?
We do.
Okay.
I want to say it's closer to 38 or 3900 a month, but...
So if that's the case...
Kristy Lenz is our accountant, and she would know.
So if that's the case, why don't we change that $3,000 lease payment to more accurately reflect what it is? So if it's 36 or 3700 over this year, and then, and then subject to the annual CPI, perhaps? Or just kind of update that number? And then, okay, so... The initial lease will expire now, it's on 2033. That's not with the 10-year extension. That is just the 2033, correct? So it was a misprint?
The lease expires in 2022. And that's where the, in 2022, the 10-year option could be put in play, the final 10-year option.
2023.
2023, yeah.
And then 10 years would expire.
I'm sorry, 2023.
That's okay.
I believe...
I'm sorry, the staff report says 2022.
Mine doesn't.
I believe we have to notify you by July 31st of next year for intent to exercise the final 10 years.
So what you would like is that, say, okay, give it to us, give us the 20 now. Move the 20 up. So that would be 2041 with two 10-year extensions.
Yes, that's correct.
So 2061.
Where are we going to be?
That would have been my direction, my motion would be to direct staff to come back with the terms that we could finalize, and that being your update, Annie, to add the CPI rather than do it at the end of the year. So to do that monthly, and then to begin the 20-year lease with two 10-year extensions.
And let me ask another question of our city manager. What's happening with the yacht club right now? Are they going to expire in 2023 as well?
I do not have that lease in front of me, Annie, but last time we updated. The Tuna Club, I believe, we tried to do as much parity as we could between the two. There are some differences, but I want to say they're aligned approximately in the same year timeframe with the existing one right now.
Okay. Okay, any comments or is there a motion or a direction?
I just gave it.
I just gave it.
And who...
I just did it.
Who seconded it?
Do we need to make a motion on it? Or I just give you a direction?
I would prefer a vote on that, so I know and make sure that there's agreement. So my second was Sarah.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rosa? Oh, wait, any public comment?
Public comment, Michael?
I have no public comment.
Anybody in the audience?
Can I just ask a quick question as well? Is it possible to require as part of the lease agreement, just an updated list of members and/or a list of members that have been invited? And the only reason I ask that is because of previous questions by the public regarding membership, and we talked about this on the phone, too, of wanting to hopefully see the membership not only grow, but also to potentially see the first female member to be able to join this. And just to ensure that, I know that they have the anti-discrimination clauses in agreements for the club. And I'm encouraged to hear that Mr. Neuse thinks it's, you know, likely to happen soon, just because of the way that different things are going. And I know with COVID, having not a lot of members being asked to join this year, but hoping to hear that news soon would be amazing to hear. So, I just don't know if there's any legality the city has in being the property owner that is in charge of the lease and any issues with making sure that there's not discrimination taking place. Just to be on the safe side. Is that something that can be added in or requested?
Lisa, I just want to say that... I was just having a look at their website to see. I thought that information was already public. But I know previously, eight to eight years or so ago, we were looking at this from a member of our community that had questioned it. And I know I was provided with a booklet that had the, all the members' information in it.
Okay, and I know that they...
So I would sort of assume as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that that is public information.
Early available, okay.
And I guess that's a question for the city attorney.
Yeah, I can look at, look, look into that and if that's proper, because they are a private club. So, some private clubs have their roles confidential, but if we can, we will include it.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other comments, sir?
No, I don't, other than just to follow up on your question about the reporting. I'll make sure if that hasn't been done, which sounds like it hasn't, that we will get you those. All of the invoices are here on the island, so we can get, we can get, I can get both the foundation. And I have it in a spreadsheet, but it's not very elegant, so I'll...
And it sounds as though there just have to be annual, your maintenance and your donations, charitable donations, just an annual thing, I believe, in the contract.
Yeah, and in the contract, as I understand it, I mean, I understand it, I read it. The charitable component isn't really quantified, although we very much are committed to it. Whereas the maintenance, as I believe, is 30,000 annually. That's not an easy number to, or a hard number for us to hit, so that's fine. So I don't have any questions. I just want to make sure that, it's one of those things that slips through the cracks. And I want to make sure we have a process in place. So, you know, we're providing those, that information to you guys, you know, every year, sometime, probably early January.
Oh, yeah, because the maintenance was another $30,000. Can make improvements or maintenance valued at least $30,000, so...
Yes.
So if you give us that, and then, and then whatever you do in terms of donation, that's awesome.
Right, yep.
And we don't want to have a charitable donation. Well, the foundation is a different...
It's a different organization.
So we wouldn't put that in here anyway, I wouldn't think.
You know, our bylaws are really heavily, you know, the foundation's charter is really centered a lot around supporting the city and the city council.
Okay. Great, okay. We'll have the vote.
Counselmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavell?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And item number six.
Item number six is to continue our discussion regarding autoet lengths and maybe possible changes to the Avalon Municipal Code. Just as a quick refresher, at the February 16, 2021 meeting, the city council directed staff to do four things, and I'm just going to go through those real quickly. And that was to, since vehicle season was underway by two weeks already, was to allow autoets currently on the island to receive a special temporary permit for a period of one year while the city determines exactly how many vehicles do not meet the current autoet definition or qualify for a low-speed vehicle neighborhood electric length exemption. And continue gathering data and making an informed analysis and return for next steps. Number two was to not allow any new temporary permits be authorized for vehicles exceeding the length requirement as outlined in the code. New permits would be defined as autoets not previously registered to the city of Avalon. Three is to not allow the resale of limo autoets from commercial entities to residents. And four, to not allow the limo autoets to be registered with the city if the vehicle was not purchased, if the vehicle was purchased after February 16, 2021. And as stated in the report, we did send letters out to the two businesses that have the potential to sell golf carts. And then also, so as of the end of vehicle season, which was on April 1st, we had approximately 1,140 vehicles were registered at that time. And we still have approximately 400 vehicles that still have not been registered. Now, some of them could have left the island, but that's according to our database. So, of that, of that number, 828 were residential, full-time autoets. 312 were non-residential autoets. And of those, that number, 179 are residential, non-residential autoets that exceed that maximum length of 120 inches. We did break that down for you in several different ways. The ones that exceed the 120 were 129, 129, excuse me. And then we broke it down for vacation rentals and then rental golf carts. And I do want it noted, though, in the rental golf carts, they just don't have a non-residential autoet. Some of them had commercial autoet and some had commercial vehicle permits. So that gives them the ability to be up to 200 inches. So, they're legal on the streets. And then when, part of the problem, I think, is when they were resold out to residents because they were already existing on the island. It's just one of our theories that that's how they...
Right.
Were approved. And then, so you see how they were broken down from those under 125 inches and then up to 130, up to 135, and the percentages of that.
Am I missing something? Are there any vehicles that were 120?
Oh, a lot of them, Annie. So, those only are 16% of the 1,140 that have registered. Only 16% were over the 120 inches.
Oh, okay, okay.
And I just want to say with full disclosure, I'm at 123.
So then, we broke down also the rental units or rental vehicles for you by making the different makes. So 84% of them are Yamahas. The next one would be the Suzuki, which is only 6% of them. Club cars, 4%, and the Easy Go, 3%, and then others, which would be the Kia, the Porter, the Gem. Let's see, the other thing I want to point out that, so I already expressed, I think, one of the reasons is the rental golf carts got resold to residents in town. We maybe, city staff misinterpreted the vehicle code and they measured not from bumper to bumper, but without, within that. And also, misinterpreting maybe the low-speed electric vehicles. If it was electric, did that qualify up to the 138? And then vehicles were approved as they met the AMC, but later modified, which we've seen autoets in town that have the flap down or they've added an extension to the golf cart rack, things like that. So we have listed a couple potential solutions here. We can either amend the municipal code to redefine the length of the autoet, so anything greater than 120 inches. We could prohibit the sales and any new permits for autoets that exceed the maximum length as defined in the code. Allow autoets currently on the island that exceed the maximum length to remain. However, prohibit the sale of vehicles to another owner. One of the vehicles exceeds its useful life or its current owner, it would be required to be removed. I do not recommend that. I do not recommend that, because that it will be very hard for us to regulate. That would be if I sold, you mayor, my golf cart for a few thousand dollars, I leave the island, you come up here happy that you got a new golf cart, and you go to register it, and we tell you, sorry, it's cannot be registered in the city, and you're out your money, because I've already sold it and released it to you. So that one, it would be very hard for the city staff to regulate. And the third option was to maintain the municipal code definition of autoette, require all autoettes that do not qualify for the low-speed vehicle neighborhood electric vehicle length exemption to be removed or otherwise deemed illegal on the streets. So we wanted to give you a starting point, so we're giving you the recommendation of redefining the length of an autoette to go up to 130 inches, and this solution would address 90% of the autoettes that are currently out on the streets. In your staff, staff report also, it has, just shows you the list, the make and the models, the length of those vehicles that the vehicle clerk had measured. We gave you the city's municipal code and provided you also with the California vehicle code for low-speed vehicles. And the last thing in there is another reference to a California vehicle code. I know several of us, well, council as well as myself, we met with one of the local retailers at Catalina Yamaha, and I think a couple of you might have met with Buffalo Motors. And so, there you go.
It's a lot of work, thank you, and thanks staff for doing, putting all this together. And one of the other things I'd like to mention, no matter what we do, is, is the, the unladen weight of no more than 1,800 pounds, I don't know what, what bearing that has on anything.
That was, and I believe in one of our, well, our city code of, it had to be within so many pounds, and I think that was by definition in the golf cart regulation tied to the DMV code.
Okay, well, I...
The thing is, so, and then you can get hung up, I'm sorry, mayor, on the, the term autoette. We just use that term to go not just with golf carts, but if it fell within the 120 inches, like the Porter, or the, whatever, all the other cars that are out there, no, no matter what their weight was, if they were within that 120 inches, it was just classified with the city as, as an autoette. We could definitely be changing parts of the code that don't line up with...
Well, how, how have we been weighing these vehicles?
We don't weigh them.
I know, so I don't know if that's...
It would be on a DMV paperwork, I believe it tells you the weight of your vehicle.
I don't think we're checking that, are we?
No, ma'am. I don't know if it's on our registrations that come in the...
So if it, top to code, if, to me, if it doesn't need to be there, you might as well throw out something if it's really not necessary. That's just my point, I'm just, that's me. Because scions are coming in.
Say that again, Annie?
What?
Say that again?
I'm wondering if, if, if we're not weighing and looking at the weight of these vehicles that are coming in, I don't know, I would just have 1,800 pounds there, because some of these bigger golf carts, right or wrong, I mean, might not have gotten on because of their weight, or may, I don't know what a scion weighs, or any of that.
I don't think the weight is the issue, it's the length.
I know, so if we don't need to have that in there, I just don't know why it's in there, I guess. Because somebody would say, well, why do you have it in there? Unless Michael Palmer thinks a reason why we should keep it in there? He wasn't paying attention.
I just had no comment.
Great answer, Michael, thank you.
This is Scott, I think the weight limitation was put on to prevent wear and tear of our streets, so that may be something that Bob can chime in on.
Yeah. Bob said yes?
Bob says yes, it is.
Okay. But we don't pay for these people that come with the big giant things, and the army that just came through with those big giant vehicles with all the concrete on them on our streets? We don't say, hey, you're going to be here for, you know, and I'm not picking on them, I'm happy for what they're doing, but, you know, we don't, there's no...
I would assume tour vehicles cause more damage than autoettes that are over the weight limit on city streets.
Yeah.
And I appreciate them, I'm not saying anything against them, but they would cause more damage than, than that, so.
Right, right. Well, okay, I'll start the conversation. I don't care, it could be 130 or 135, I'm not really strong, I'm kind of leaning to the 130 being the maximum, okay? And all the others that are already registered, they get a grandfather sticker. And, and they have to have off-street parking going forward, and no, on any of those, no resale or transfer. And again, we can change the color of the sticker so that it's, it's the grandfather and the no resale or transfer, so then once, so, so, and if it says, no, no sale or transfer on that sticker, and if I'm stupid enough to buy a, a cart with a sticker that says that, shame on me. So we would have to have a special sticker, since we're on those. Something, something to that effect.
And your max, mayor, was 130, did you say?
I'd go with the group, I mean, I don't know what they're all thinking, but I'm, I'm thinking 130, there's only seven of them that are 135, but I'm not going to get picky over that. I mean, you're recommending 130, I could go with that, but if other council members have another comment or thought, that's fine, too.
I was thinking 130 as well.
Agree.
Okay.
I, I was thinking, looking at the safety aspects of having a golf cart that seats the number of people that are going to ride, and if it's safer to have the larger golf cart for a family of six or more, or a residence of six or more, does it make sense to look at why the limitation was put there in the first place, and how that looks now?
Which, which limitation?
The, the length limit, the length limit. Original, so, yeah, I had the meeting with both, with both Mr. King and Mr. McCall, and the, the challenges I have with being frustrated that people, one, were able to get golf carts that were larger than they were supposed to be, and that the enforcement of those upon registration wasn't there previously, and they were already stickered, including rental golf carts, and that the original, the original way that the length was determined was that they didn't want to go longer than one company that was already here, and so then that was the number that was put upon, was the biggest size was 119, so they went with 120. It seems that we're always adjusting to meet whatever is already here, as opposed to looking at what is safe, what doesn't make noise, what isn't environmentally polluting, and what makes sense for the community. So my challenge with saying that we put then a restriction on something that's already here, is the challenge of knowing that some of these vehicles, and I would like to hear potentially from both Captain Bedali and Allegria on this, if you could just speak to what that, excuse me, chief for both of you guys, if, if you could speak to, have you seen an increase in vehicle accidents with larger golf carts? Is there a six-passenger golf cart that causes more accidents, or rollovers, or issues with safety? Or do they tend to solve more problems because you're not having six people try to sit on a golf cart made for four? That's the first question.
Now you have eight people trying to get on a golf cart.
Right.
Seating six.
It's always going to be more, which is the issue. But I don't know if those past, those longer golf carts, one, first of all, are less safe, so that's my first question, I guess.
And those larger golf carts are coming from one location, pretty much.
Right, right.
So I don't know if, if, Captain, you haven't been here that long, but you, I probably, you might have a couple of observations. And then I don't know if our new chief says, hey, man, we're just taking care of the patient, we don't know anything about the vehicles.
And you may not have anything to say, but I figure it's worth asking, because this decision ultimately will also impact both of your days, so.
Yeah, we would have to research our traffic collision reports, do a query of that, and see what golf carts have been involved, and provide a, a report to council.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, we've, we go on all the golf carts, rental golf carts, they all tip, but in our reports, I don't think it would say...
Four or six.
If it was a four or six.
Okay, yeah.
I could look and tell you how number, but I, we had one the other day, and I just happened to ask the guy that showed up, roughly, how many, I think, are we going on a year? And he said about 10 to 15, and then one year, 2018, it was like 25.
Okay.
So the rental carts also have some numbers that we could look at.
Yeah, great.
Thank you.
And I really don't have a problem making what's here now legal, just that, and whatever size they are, that those that are here now get grandfathered. It's the idea of people going to the mainland and going to a dealer on the mainland and bringing a large one over. They, they should know what the parameters should be before they bring something over here. And I know that the freight line can't stop them from coming, but we don't have to permit them, it's, then it's on them. We've allowed those people that are here, we have adjusted to oversight from the city that, that wasn't done correctly, and we allowed those golf carts that are here right now, because I don't see that they have impacted parking in that we're not there yet, but I don't want to get there. So set it at 130, allow those that are here to be grandfathered in. I mean, my sticker, when I got my sticker this year, I got a hole punched in it, so they know that mine is oversized.
Yeah.
It's something that we can do going forward, but I'd have no problem going ahead and okaying those that are here, and pass that, no.
And then the only frustration I have with that is the number of people that have wanted to get larger golf carts, and have followed the rules, and are now not able to, but other people who didn't are.
And I, I understand that, but to me, welcome to Avalon, that's what everybody in this town does all the time.
We got to start fixing it somehow, are we, yeah. Well, so, but could not, okay, on those other ones, then, that are grandfathered, we, because we wouldn't be doing it again until next year.
Correct.
Except maybe with those other 400 that are out there, that are coming in late, that might not qualify, and, and we, they have a special sticker. So if they have a different colored sticker, then, I, because I know you're saying that would be hard for you all to do, but when they come to re-register, it's, you've got one of these black stickers, and that, and it says no resale, no transfer on it. Does that solve the problem? Denise?
Well, it potentially could, yes, mayor, I'm just thinking if I were going out and buying Lisa's golf cart, I don't know if I'd take the time to really look at her windshield, you know? It, I guess also, we would need to get the information out more. I, I, you, your one comment about they can't be, they can't be on the streets, they have to have, be provided off-street parking, that gives me great pause, mayor, that if I just spent $6,000 on a used golf cart, and I'm a few inches over, and you're telling me I need now to find off-street parking, and that's, I don't have a driveway, I...
Yeah, I, that, that's fine, no, that's fine.
And that also takes parking away from public access unless they have it, like, right now, I would actually like to remove that rule eventually, like, that can be on a discussion for a future council meeting, but it takes away on the flats, at least, parking that should be available anyway, because they're required to have that. The off-street parking cut usually ends up taking away...
Parking space.
Yeah, we haven't had the, the thought about making more curb cuts at all, and I think we all kind of agree on that one, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
But if they have off-street, you know, it's just kind of like when we were talking about vehicles, and only, I'm talking about you, when you have off-street parking, why don't you use it? And people just get lazy about using, losing, using their off-street parking, you know, opening the gate, or da-da-da-da, and it would just be nice if people would do that to make room, especially on those streets that are really impacted with cars, and golf carts. Okay. So, okay, I'm opening up for you all, what about a sticker, something that says no resale, no transfer? I mean, some, at some point, people have to take responsibilities for themselves, and so if you don't, if, Michael, you're trying to sell me your thing, and you're not telling me, I'm going to come back and take it out on you, you know? Because you, you would be the one that lied to me, and, and said, oh, you didn't read the sticker that said no resale, you know, I mean...
And, and once again, I go back to, it's here, it, it's, it's been in use, if they sell it to somebody else, now if that person who sold it and was going to go get a bigger one, that to me is the problem. But since this one's already here, I don't have the problem with it, we just, it's been grandfathered in, and like I said, we could, if not doing a different colored sticker, then we, we tag it like we did the ones this year with the, with the punch.
But, okay, the other situation that happens, too, is the condition of these vehicles, and how they're left. So, so now I've got a, I've got a six-passenger that's a piece of crap, but you only have $200 to spend, so I'm going to sell that to you and keep that piece of crap on the road? No, it needs to get off the island.
But then, but then, Annie, we have four-seater golf carts that are pieces of crap now, and they're still here.
No, it didn't matter...
And they've been here...
No, no.
In the 25 years that I've been.
No, 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 and I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have just said six, anything that's now a piece of crap. But the other thing is, at another discussion, is what to do, we got to get rid of the two-stroke, the two-strokes, that's a big deal, and we've looked at that kind of, but I think we need to stick our heels into it again, and look at the two-strokes, and get those...
I, I agree.
And those should not be res, those are, and right now, we have a no resale, those should not, or, those should not be allowed to be resold either, because they are nasty. That's the biggest complaint I get from visitors on my email, is the smell and the noise of the two-stroke.
Yeah.
So...
And some commercial vehicles.
Oh, of course, yeah, yeah, yeah.
My issue is going to be those six-seater rental golf carts that will come onto the market. I don't think those should be resold.
Betty Wilson has no problem.
Okay.
He said that was fine, he has no problem with resale on the island on those. So that was good news. So that wasn't a battle we had to kind of discuss or fight, but...
So your recommendation, Councilmember Ponce, is to continue with the communication with the two rental agencies, to let them know that they are not to resell those on the streets.
Right.
And for the people that are going to get these stickers, is it just the people that are on this staff report? How do we know, like, if someone didn't register is now trying to get a sticker?
They should have registered on time. I mean, in all fairness.
Usually...
So it's just people on the staff report?
I'm sorry, he said, what did you say?
It would just be the people on the staff report? If they were to get a sticker?
That would be up to the council to tell me what to do.
I'm, I'm sorry, yes, Annie, I'm confused.
She's saying are the numbers that we're going to be stickering for approval only the numbers listed on the staff report, or would they extend to the 400 vehicles that haven't been registered yet, potentially?
We don't know how many of those are oversized yet.
That's what she's asking, though, is if, if, even if we don't know, are we approving those automatically, because they're here already?
I say no, I won't vote for that.
Wait, so, so I, let's say, so I have a, I have 130, what, if I have a 130-inch one, and I haven't registered it yet, what happens?
Adios.
Well, no, that, I, if I have 131 or more, I, I would say, but we're already, if we're already talking about changing the code to be 130, then that encompasses those. But anything that's 131 inches and over would not be grandfathered. If we're talking about grandfathering these 18 additional ones...
Right.
Outside of the 130 inches, those are the ones that I would be in agreeance with, because they attempted, they came up, tried to do the right thing, and we put them on the list, so that's, they, they've done their part for now. But if we change the municipal code to 130 inches, then it's 130 inches. It doesn't matter whether they registered yesterday or on time, or whatnot.
So you're saying a...
But if somebody comes in with 143 inch next week, we say no.
But it, but it's already been on the island, they're just late, you're saying no?
Yep.
They were due on the first, today is the 19th, 20th?
20th.
That's, you know, at some point, there are consequences to your action, and at some point, you have to pay those consequences.
Okay. However, are consequences that we have fined that are attached to those that are late? So that's a question for the city attorney. Okay, however, are consequences that we have fined that are attached to those that are late? So that's a question for the city attorney.
Because the the new ordinance, if we proceeded with the timeline of first reading, second reading, thirty thirty days to go into effect, we're about at June, the middle of June. And I don't know, Scott, are you there? You are, Scott.
All we can do right now is um is until the ordinance is amended, strictly enforce the ordinance that we have. And and use whatever fine mechanisms we have in that ordinance. Um, we can't we can't enforce something that's not in our current current ordinance.
But if somebody comes to register a vehicle that's a hundred and forty-three inches tomorrow, we say no.
Absolutely, you can do that, yes.
Wait, on a on what?
On that, it's not it's not. Because it's in violation of the the strict, you know, it's in violation of what your ordinance limit is.
How long have we been talking about this? So people might not have brought their vehicle in because they wanted to see what we decided. Has that been a long enough time? Or I live at Hamilton Cove and I haven't been to the island because of COVID, because that's the that's what they're gonna say. I've been.
Unless they're unless they're they're self. If unless they don't have a rental agent, the rental agent has most of the rental agents have taken care of registering their vehicles. You can't tell me that they couldn't find somebody to come and 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 do the vehicle.
Okay.
Or call.
Or call, yeah.
I mean, in so many different examples we can give, you call and find out, you know, what what do we do about this? It's it's very similar to me that the computer books, you call and find out, what can I do? My book's expiring. You know, I personally received an extension. So I I mean, you call, you make an effort, and that's where I'm saying.
Yeah.
They already got something that was outside of the ordinance and maybe they don't know that and I and. And I agree, this is probably a tiny bit harsh, but also you have a period of time to register your golf cart.
And so now they will have and now they will have heard about this and with, oh, no, okay, never mind. Huh.
Yeah.
I just don't know what I think about that.
That being said, let's let's keep the conversation going. If if our council has agreed to certain potentials, can we open it up and? Keep the conversation moving?
Sure. Are there any comments on your phone on your?
I do have one comment. It comes from Sherry Cobb. She writes, no, it was not from the rental carts being sold. People were actually purchasing six-seater golf carts for over twenty years.
Have been doing what?
Releasing six-seater golf carts for over twenty years.
I'm not gonna buy that one.
Okay, so in the case of her, Sherry sent she called, she's got one of the bigger ones, correct? Sherry does. So the only restriction on her, because I'm sure she has her sticker on it, would be that she could not resell that on the island. Is that correct? If we go that way? Is that correct, ladies? Okay, I see him. Okay, okay. Alrighty. So what do we have, Denise?
You have to change the municipal code to increase the length to a hundred and thirty inches max. Um, anything over that or and existing ones get grandfathered, no resale or transfer, and we will. Make some kind of new sticker that specifically says on it no sale or or transfer. And it'll be a different type of sticker. You, I think, are in agreeance that we were not gonna put in the caveat off-street parking required.
Correct.
And we'll notify the two rental agencies that they are to continue with the direction from the council of not to resell any of them to.
And we're gonna take the weight limit off of the code? I I'm just kind of looking for consensus?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, and now just very quickly. The bumper-to-bumper stuff. Cause I think it says in here that we we measure bumper to bumper.
Is there a way for us to modify and clean up how we measure the golf cart? So there's just one, like if we were to go to a certain parking spot in City Hall. And it's already lined up, golf carts just go inside of it. If it's outside, it's outside. If it's inside of the lines, good to go instead of using cones, because it seems like the cones were the problem here.
That that's a that's a clever idea, huh?
They were measuring them this year, though, I believe, right?
With a tape.
Yes, they had a they have a little. Yes.
But the li- the lines might be an interesting thing. Also, is there a width, okay?
Fifty-five inches.
Okay, is that are we measuring that way too? Have we been measuring this way?
As for for me on that, since a golf cart, i- if a golf cart ever got to the full width of a full-size vehicle, then I can see it.
Right, right.
But because you already have, it's it's length taking up space, it's not width taking up space, because you have full-size vehicles and golf carts sharing a street. So it's not, I I don't see the width as being the big issue. Unless you're try you're trying to park at at Bonds.
By a Scion.
Yeah, by a Scion.
Right.
And I feel really bad. Joe, Joe's. Is talking about that and, oh, it's not gonna be your problem, but I was by a Scion and and I, yeah, anyway. Uh, okay, what else is in there, uh, ladies and gentlemen? The staff have any comments, Michael Palmer? I mean, you you can all have opinions, you know? I guess you it's in your staff report, that's your opinion, but if there's any other comments or something we're not seeing.
The biggest issue I have is we're again making an arbitrary decision on length without having a vehicle study. And I would like to know if staff has an idea of what a vehicle study would cost and would like to make an informed educated decision instead of saying, well. One twenty didn't work, so we'll go with one thirty. But maybe one thirty didn't work, so we'll go with one thirty-five. What the overall goal again of trying to keep congestion down. To provide enough parking, to make sure that there's no safety impacts from the length of the vehicle. It's a little frustrating to me that we keep moving that goalpost again and again, just to match what most of things fit in town. And it's not quite fair to the residents also, because we keep moving the goalposts based on what they've done, breaking the rules to be able to make the law.
But I think.
Lisa, I can tell you, I've been asking for a transportation study for almost eight years.
I know.
I doubt it's gonna happen at this point.
Do we know how much money it would be?
A transportation study or a vehi- what what are you asking for exactly?
A vehicle and traffic study, a parking congestion. Route and traffic study. Not transportation, excuse me. It's the common word over all that stuff.
That was like that when you asked that lady that question the other night about the thing, and no, it doesn't include that.
Right, no.
But we're doing all this other stuff.
Right.
You know, the multi multimodal and all of that, and it's all gotta be.
Well, and part of, I think, what the general plan started talking about, but didn't go fully into previously, also has to do with that, where it talks about routes and traffic and congestion and movement and everything else.
I I I can tell you, we'll we'll do a traffic study. And the recommendations will come out and everybody will hate it. I I have no problem doing it, but to be honest, one of the big things is shut down Third Street.
Yeah.
But if you shut down Third Street, the outrage that we will hear from the community, because they don't wanna have to do that second stop sign.
Yeah.
On on Beacon.
I already wanted to do it for COVID, so get mad at me, people, I don't care.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, absolutely, you're right. It was already in, it's literally a thing in the general plan to make that a pedestrian access.
Access, yes.
So, no, I don't have an issue with that personally, and yes, I think we should look at that, and yes, there are a lot of ways that traffic could be solved if they became certain ways streets and other things that would happen. So I don't have an issue with that. I think we need to do it, but I'm just wondering, how much money is that?
So in the meantime, though, in the meantime.
Yeah.
We'll move ahead, though.
Uh, but and and.
Or or you wanna say no, and then we don't deal with the vehicle length for another three?
But the the problem being is we've gotten toward it.
Right.
Because we as the city, we're not following through.
Yeah.
And we need to follow through and we need to make sure that we are sticking to our guns.
Yeah.
I. I.
Okay.
I'm gonna go on my rant. My rant is, for those of us who moved here, we moved here for a reason. We moved here so that we didn't have to deal with the craziness of commuting on the mainland. Now we're here, but now we want every little piece of what's over there over here. To make our life a little bit more convenient. In a one-square-mile downtown area, not citywide, but downtown area. That is very walkable, very easy to get to. And that just drives me crazy that.
Yeah.
And that you have, okay, you now have a Scion or or a a little car. And you go out Beverly Beach Road at thirty miles an hour, forty miles an hour. Why? What what is gonna, what are you so late for that you have to do that or even do that downtown? I I think we also need to look at ourselves and police ourselves as to the bad habits that we have. Yeah, that's just.
That was nice to say.
Done with my rant.
That was nice to say.
All right. Okay, let's talk just very briefly about the bumper-to-bumper, because just as they do with the um samurais, which probably isn't the safest thing, that they take off that back bumper and then there's your gas tank. So we need to make sure that they're not trying to modify these carts in such a way to make them legal, but doesn't make them safe. And I don't know how we do that. For example, unlike that big one that we saw at Yamaha, and it has that big thing that sticks out and then the thing to help them get in the car. You know, well, that one he modified, I don't know how long it was. And he made just a little or a littler step on, remember, for that one? Is is that a problem?
Right, that those are my concerns, is that it hasn't been studied. The vehicle was made a certain way at a certain length. And you're running into potential additional safety issues, because you don't have a spot for people to put their whole foot onto the baseboard, the back bumper of a vehicle. Are you gonna have an issue then if you're stopping suddenly and someone hits their feet because that extra piece of metal is not there to stop a vehicle? Are you gonna have an issue with rollover or anything else? Because now it's modified to the point where it's gonna hit your ankle instead of being fully supportive of your foot. There's a lot of things that have not been looked at with those that are worrisome, like I, you know, it.
Yeah.
It's worrisome to me that that they're and I don't, I trust. I know that nobody is doing work that is neglectful. They're doing work that they're trying to make it fit, and they're trying to do the safest thing they know how to to make that fit. But that wasn't the original intent of the design. There's reasons why vehicles are designed the way they are, same with the samurais, especially with the speeds they can go. You know, are we are we are we causing more issues and safety hazards by trying to fit into something that doesn't make sense anymore? That needs to be reviewed fully and adjusted and not just incrementally changed to match what's here.
But what is interesting is how few vehicle incidences there are when you think about it, with all the samurais and the Scions and the Smart Cart. There's no, there's really no accident?
No, it's mostly drunk people that are visiting that are flipping vehicles, although I will.
Hard hard local drivers.
It's not always true. It's yes, absolutely. Historically, I know one of those, so for sure. Um, but yeah, no, it's, you know, I mean, the fact that we, I think, Yesseni and I got sent photos from three different cr- crashes and or, you know, flip-overs sites in a week. Just two weeks ago.
Golf carts.
Golf carts. People, visitor golf carts, rental vehicles that had been flipped or rolled. And, you know. This maybe doesn't address that, it's a whole separate issue, but it's something to consider when we're looking at how we're approving and what we're approving and what we're doing.
Right.
See, cause I'm gonna make a comment right now. Um. I had a gentleman when I worked at Mount Ada who asked. About rental golf carts. And why they were so expensive. And the response back to them is that the rental golf carts are a self-guided tour. That that's why they, that's why they're the price they are, they're a self-guided tour. So then if it's a self-guided tour, then that golf cart, a rental golf cart should not be allowed to park in the parking lot at a market. Or really park anywhere, because it should be moving as a golf, it it should not be parking downtown. You know.
Interesting.
Stop stop that's and areas. Um.
That's okay.
Yeah, uh, but that's what I was told, is that it is a, the way they they came into play is that they became a self-guided tour. So it and it drives me crazy when I drive by Bonds and there's twenty rental golf carts, because they've all gone to Bonds and I or. Parked in front of a hotel like this morning, that you couldn't park in front of it, because it was all rental golf carts.
Well, and people use them for transportation to luggage and, yeah.
And that's that's not what they, but it was not their intention, that's their that that was a self-guided tour.
Hey, look, we're doing our own vehicle and parking study right here.
Yeah.
Basically.
But are we going to move ahead with this with the recommendations? Yes, I see a couple heading on.
This this works for me.
Okay, and then we don't, you might vote no, because you're waiting for the traffic study, but that's okay.
And I might vote no, because I think that if we're gonna allow some to get it, then we should allow. All, but that's a whole different discussion.
Oh, up to the hundred and forty-five inches?
Hmm.
You don't think they should be grand, they they should just?
I I get Michael's concern about congestion and and having a lot more vehicles of that size. But I also think that newer vehicles that may be larger size are also gonna be newer vehicles that are gonna be both safer and cleaner.
We can always make the make it that if they're buying one that's bigger. Then the older one is going away and not being resold around the island.
Well, and that's the those are some of the considerations I think we need to be looking at bigger picture is, you know, does it make sense to have? We talked about, and I know Jordan tried when he was here to do a cash-for-clunkers program, and the way that the. The South Coast, uh, the SQMD, yeah, they would not approve it for autowets. It wasn't part of their thing, because it wasn't in the vehicle code for California. I don't know if, given our unique aspect, if we can go back to them and ask them to approve a cash-for-clunkers program in Avalon and be able to make that a stipulation moving forward of. Two-stroke engines of vehicles that are over the noise ordinance, which we need to be doing again. I think we had talked about a three-year cycle for that, and that's coming up or was last year, but. COVID and everything else, like I I'm not.
Right.
I'm not trying to jump on that right now, but um. But that, you know, could we do a program like that and could that get approved to be able to do this? And then the stipulation is there that you're required to pay a portion of it, and they would pay a portion of it and be able to make it equitable for everybody. It needs it needs to be done. Right now, there's no mechanism for people to get their golf carts off the island easily. And if it's not easy, people won't do it, and even sometimes if it is easy, people won't do it, so.
If they were reselling it, if they ran and they could resell it, they could get money for it, and it's free for them to take it off the island. So, uh, cause we've been able to sell even junk, right, with these, some of these we have to ship off, or do we have to pay for those? Those ones that don't run off the island?
So far, so we ship them off for free and then they the impound people or the, I can't think, those junkyards come and pick them up.
And and.
We don't get any money for any, we're just happy they come down to the.
We're just glad they're gone.
No, okay, okay, okay.
But the other part of this I don't know is if it makes sense to create two classes of vehicle registration for autowets. One that is under a certain length and one that is over and have a certain number of permits for both.
Oh, God, don't even.
You want another list? I'm just, I'm throwing it out.
I got that was, oh, man.
Denise and Devon would kill me.
What?
I said Denise and Devon would kill me, but you know. I I there's gotta be some solutions that work, that make sense for everyone. That we don't have to keep going back every, you know, ten to twenty years and increasing the vehicle length of of an autowet.
Ten to twenty years isn't bad.
Yeah.
Ten, because hopefully we'll come up with some other solutions for electric and other.
Flying cars.
Yeah, flying cars.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, uh, okay, so. And again, it's gonna be bumper-to-bumper? Wait, just like the code says, now bumper-to-bumper?
I think so.
Okay, okay.
Oh, the other uh one question someone did ask is the possibility of code enforcement doing random measurement? A lot of people are modifying vehicles for registration and then adding things back on after the fact.
Ah.
Well, we should, okay, now they have a, now they have a um a bank, so they know when Junior comes in next year, because they measured it this year, when Junior comes back in next year. To measure, they'll go, oh, that sucker grew.
Right, no, I mean.
No, no, they're they're doing it now, and then after they're they've got their sticker, they're.
They add pieces back on to it again, and then it's removable, so they can have it on, take it off.
So it goes on and off as as needed.
You know what, if it's kind of like, it's kind of like the people that are scammers, you know, it's like you can't, you you. You know, it's like, you can't, you can't teach them to be ethical, upstanding citizens, you just can't. And some of those are gonna fall through the cracks sadly, but I, yeah. I guess Denise could talk to code about, you wanna do some random measurements, but, um, they're so busy now, we're so understaffed, I don't think that would be a priority.
Yeah, I mean, it's just if the, if it looks like it's not stickered for it and it looks like it's over, which I know that by now they're probably expert in kind of seeing now where that size limitation is or being able to walk it by foot or.
Yeah, I know.
So at least I think your, your statement is just that if code enforcement's issuing a citation and they realize it doesn't have that sticker on the front that says it's oversized, that they, okay, got it, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's good, okay.
And then is there a mechanism right now for code and or for sheriffs to be able to ticket vehicles that are not currently stickered? That don't have a city sticker or don't have a street legal sticker?
If they're, if they're parked, code can get them, yes, and otherwise if they're moving, that is up to the sheriffs.
Okay.
But sheriffs.
I, I have a question.
Sheriffs can do it if they're parked as well, we can't just rely on code.
Parked and moving?
Absolutely, Annie, I was just sorry.
So while they're walking the streets, they can take a peek as well.
I have a question. For a golf cart to be driven in the city of Avalon, not only does it have to have a sticker? But doesn't it have to have license plates and registration?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, because I know of a few that don't. And.
That are legally stickered today and not?
There's no, no, there is no sticker, no license plates, um, no registration.
Well, they're just under the radar.
Yeah, and I, I have an idea, I know where they work, I just don't know who they are. But, um, yeah. I, I just wanna make sure.
Absolutely, they need to be licensed.
And with the DMV sticker, yeah. Okay, so you got it?
So we're doing Annie's motion and? Do I have a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Further comments? Call for the vote.
Any comments, Michael?
I do not.
And nobody's outside, I'm assuming.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
No.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
For the records, we have four ayes, one no, and that's Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you.
And once again, I did the golf cart shame of having an oversized golf cart. The humiliation.
Uh, Councilmember Ponce, didn't you complain about people moving to Avalon for a certain style, type of lifestyle? And then breaking the rules?
I did not know my golf cart was oversized, seriously.
You seem like a well-informed person, how come you didn't know?
I've never taken the measure out.
Oh, item number seven.
Item number seven is a discussion regarding potential ban on segways. Uh, this item is on the agenda at the request of a council member. And at this time, there are no commercial Segway operations that are happening in the city of Avalon. We discovered that segways are no longer in production. And I believe the parts are hard to get, I know that Eddie Vega is having a hard time getting what he needs to fix his Segway. Someone let.
So, oh, I was gonna say.
Take it away, Cindy.
I'll just take this since it was me who put it on the agenda. Um, and I asked for this to be on the agenda because we were having all the conversations about the e-bikes and how many we wanted, if we wanted any more or less or whatnot, so, um, what I, I didn't realize until after I did some further research myself is that there's also Segway makes another item called a Ninebot, which is, um, similar to a Segway, only a smaller platform. And also electric scooters. So, uh, my initial thought was that I, I, and through the electric bike conversation, the many members of the community who reached out to me. The concern is that the, the traffic is so bad as it is, and especially in the summer months, and we can barely get our, we can barely get anybody to even use the sidewalks, let alone, um, create the space for more traffic through town, so. I would rather without having an application in front of us for somebody who wants to start a business or to, to create another type of tour, I wanted the council to have the conversation without the pressure of an application in front of us. Um, so for, for those that have spoken to me about the congestion and the issues, um, the request is to, uh, put a ban on segways, and then I would have added the Ninebots and the electric scooters for rental. Certainly, there's some ADA, um, you know, there, there are some ADA reasons why we may see something of this nature in town. Um, but specifically for rental or for tours is why I've asked for this to be on the agenda, so I'll just listen and hear what the council's thoughts are.
I'm with you, Cindy. Uh, I've seen too many horror stories, especially with the, with the electric scooters, so.
Right. This is, uh, Yessenya, just to clarify that, yes, this is not for any personal reason for somebody who had it or had an electric scooter for their kids, this is for rental, for commercial, for tours. Um, encompassing all commercial. And I'm sorry, Michael, can you repeat what you were trying to say, we, we sort of talked over you a bit?
Yeah, no, I, I'm with you on that, um, I've just seen horror stories about people and their electric scooters. Especially when they were just showing up in cities. And had never gotten approval from the cities just to start renting them out. And people leaving them everywhere, I, I don't think that's something that we need to be doing in Avalon. But no, if, if it's for, if it's for personal use, I have no problem, it's the, the commercial use.
So I guess then I would make a motion to direct staff to bring back a ordinance, um, to uh, ban commercial rental or tours of segways, Ninebots, and electric scooters, and potentially other electric transportation methods.
And so is there a better description of, instead of using, because I guess Segway is the, is the product name? And that other bot is a product name, is there a better way to put in a description of two-wheel side by side or? I mean, because if somebody else comes up with one, is it understood that it's all, you know, those kinds of things?
Personal vehicular motor, yeah, two-wheel.
What we'll do.
I, I see, yeah.
Is, is, we'll look what Santa Monica has done and we'll have language that will cover some specific and then be broad enough, um, but specific enough to cover the other things that are similar vehicles.
And that might, yeah, might come down the, might come down the pike. So can I rent those, um, little thing like Johnny Quonstrom, um, rides? That one-wheel thing? I mean, but I mean.
No.
So we've gotta be, I know, so we've gotta be inclusive.
Okay, re- remember though that, that we can put this ban in, in your ordinance, which is, it's absolute no. And then if someone gets creative or there's some new technology that comes out that is not within this category, they still have to fly to the city council for a transport, for, for, for this vehicle permit to have this business. So ultimately, even if it's not in municipal code, you don't have to give them a permit for it under your, under the municipal code as it stands. So if they come up with something new, they still have to ask permission.
I mean, if somebody wanted to come forward with a business to do tours, guided tours on the little pedal push razors, you know, that, I would consider that, there's a lot more control over, personal control over where that vehicle, if you will, goes, but the, it's just these powered ones that I'm concerned about.
Right.
But I think we're all saying the same thing anyway, so that would be my motion, I've kind of thrown it on the table, um, obviously it'll come back again for further discussion once an ordinance is developed.
Do you need a second, or did we get a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
I do.
I'll second.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Can I ask also on a future council meeting that we discuss? The electric bikes that are coming with day guests and or overnight guests on the express, that that's become a thing recently, that people are coming off of the express with electric bikes and or scooters? To use their own vehicles?
Yeah.
And just making sure that they have, they're, as opposed to people who are renting or using bikes from the other entities in town, they're not receiving any information on where they can or cannot go, and so of course the first place they go with their vehicle is Front Street. And, um, just trying to give them information of the best way to use that space. Perhaps when they're buying a boat ticket from the express or the flyer, um, that they are getting that information via email or in hand to be aware of what the map is or the road is that they can or can't use.
Well, and the Chamber of Commerce can be helpful, plus, I don't know, are they all wearing helmets also?
No. But, but neither are residents either, so that's also a whole other discussion.
Yeah, sure.
Denise, I do have a question on, uh, transfer, for, the hotels that do, uh, provide bikes to their guests? Do they have to have a transportation permit?
They do not.
So we have no way of controlling how they allow their guests to ride down Front Street? Or give direction as to the rules of the road and?
For the few hotels that are giving bicycles, Michael, we can certainly write a letter to them and ask them to, to include that in their direction.
Could we, because I don't know who does the, the white and the blue bike? Constantly down Front Street. Co- constantly.
Well, when Belanca was getting into this, they gave away a lot of their blue and white bikes too, to locals.
Oh, well.
That could be some of them, but yeah. And I bet if you ask the hotels, they'd say, oh yeah, we already tell them these things, but they probably don't, so, okay. All right, and now we get to talk about to-go beverages and open containers.
So do you want me to take that one too, since that was my request for the agenda?
Sure, I was writing notes, so, sorry.
That's okay, so I asked to have a discussion regarding open container sales and to-go beverages for, for the city. Um, with, uh, the, the issue was brought to my attention over several different instances of open containers walking around town, um, as well as, you know, on the beaches and uh, one in particular person showing up with a pre-purchased beverage from one location, trying to have dinner at another location. Um, and it, it just, now that restaurants are opening, um, you know, right now at the fifty percent capacity and then also with it to go, but then we're looking at, you know, going into the yellow tier, which further opens things up. Um, the, the thought was, do we really need to allow for the sale of the beverages to go anymore? And Devin did provide to us, um, the information from the ABC Today, which basically lists out that, you know, there that you can as a restaurant, so I guess, I don't really know that we can do anything about this right now, but I, it, you know, I, I guess we should speak a little bit to the restaurateurs that, you know, what we don't want is, is people walking around with open containers in a way that, you know, creates um, uneasiness for, for residents or for other visitors. So I, it was a conversation I wanted to have, but I really don't know that we can do anything about it.
And, and Cindy, I understand where you're coming from on this, but you know, the idea was the beverage was supposed to go home with the to-go food. Or wherever you were gonna go sit and eat, that that beverage was gonna go to that location. It wasn't, I can buy a beverage at this restaurant because they're serving alcohol and then I can walk up and down the street. That's not what this was about, this was about being able to take that beverage home or to whatever location you were going to sit down and consume your food. And it was only supposed to be those places that did serve food that would be allowed to do that. And so that's my question to Captain Badali is enforcing that part of it. Because I have seen people walking down the street with their plastic cup, and you can tell it's a cocktail inside of it. And there's no food, they're just taking their cocktail with them.
I mean, I remember seeing that pre-COVID too, though.
Yep. And from locals and visitors, equally.
And, and I.
Yeah, this isn't anything against visitors or, or it's not meant to be towards visitors or anything, it's, it's really a, you know, I, I thought that the, I thought everybody thought out of the box when this happened and restaurants were closed, except for to-go. And, y- you know, you wanna, somebody wants a Buffalo Milk, that's great, you know, order a Buffalo Milk to-go. But where we are now is on the, the, the other side of this, where we're now opening back up and it's really, you know, there, there really isn't the containment that there was before, I mean, I can order an alcoholic beverage and hand it to a sixteen-year-old next to me and, you know, do we really wanna spend the sheriff's department's time having them walk up and down Front Street, you know, questioning and carting people who are, you know, have open containers, so to speak, I mean, yes, it's always been an issue, but it's more prevalent now with the ability to go get a beverage and leave.
Well, and this thing, it was updated on twenty, March, uh, twenty twenty-one, do we? How would we be notified or at what point will the ABC say, no, can't do this anymore?
I think, I think in June, when the governor decides if he's gonna open everything up and bars open, I think as soon as bars open, it's gone.
But bars aren't.
I would agree.
Huh? But bars.
I would agree, Michael's, oh, sorry.
No, but I don't think the Marlin Club and J L's is gonna be able to open on when the restaurants can go to, I mean, I don't know.
I, 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 I know that, but when, when bars, when they say bars can open to public, then that should mean.
This will go away?
This will go away.
Right.
They, they're, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll just, if, I'll just sort of wrap the conversation up, there's nothing that we can do about it anyway, so I, after having received all the information, um, you know, I, I thought it was worth a conversation, but there's not much we can do besides just hope for the best when things open up, that it'll, it'll come back in play.
We could also.
That's all I have for eight.
We can also ask our business owners who do have restaurants and are serving alcohol, that they please explain to their guests that this, this isn't the norm.
Yeah. Sadly, we're not gonna be in New Orleans.
And, and that's it, we're not in New Orleans, we're not Las Vegas.
I asked why not, so, you know.
Part of me does.
Hashtag up for whatever. Um, I actually literally asked the question of, does it make more sense to be able to provide enforcement by creating a district that is an open container area? I don't know that the community is there, I don't think they are. I don't think, I do think the residents and the visitors are already there in terms of being someone that can walk around town with an open container, I mean, if you lived on Descanso, literally every family walks down Descanso with a cup in their hand and you know exactly what's in it because you can smell it, so.
I do, I do tell my guests, you can't go out on the street with that.
Yeah, and that's good, that's what we're supposed to be doing as business owners and runners, is telling people that. And the approach of, hey, guys, that's a possible open container find right there, be careful if you see the cops. It's more to kind of get them to finish it up and throw it away and be safer. But most of the time now, people are not paying attention to that at all because everyone else around them is doing it too, so. You know, I don't know, Cindy, I, I. you know, I don't know, Cindy, I mean, I don't know if we can be, and I was trying to look through this, just the info that Devin gave us before the meeting, if we can be more restrictive. I think we can. I don't know that we want to go there in terms of harming the funds that the the restaurants are able to make with sales right now. I don't have an issue personally with them doing alcohol service on the beach, only because they do have staff to be able to watch people. If you walk away from a table, great, you can't take that with you. Thank you very much. But is that enforcement happening because they're running up and downstairs or in in and out of restaurants? Not always. They have people on the beach for service for, you know, hosts and hostesses for each location. So maybe that can be part of that enforcement level. But I don't know if we need to say that, you know, by a certain date, if stuff happens and it doesn't have bars open by Memorial Day, that we need to say you can't do to-go alcohol anymore. Like, I I don't know if that's part of the discussion we need to have. I don't think that's what's going to happen. I think it's far enough away that that will be in that bar open situation anyway. But restaurants
I don't think we have the ability to to do that. That's where I sort of
You could say it, but don't have enforcement, right?
But, you know.
Yeah. And I don't know also, I think, Michael Palmer, I think the the next tier is 75% for restaurants and 25% indoor for bars, or is it 50?
Bars are going to be 50%.
50?
Yeah, yeah. And that's assuming that we get to the yellow tier. We may just go from orange straight into opening all sectors on June 15th.
Okay. Yeah. Well, so that's my concern is Memorial Day weekend, I don't know that law enforcement or even the restaurant staff want to have everyone taking alcohol with them all over the place. It feels like the floodgates are open and that feels extremely dangerous to me. So
But what has happened before with the other captain during that time, as those rules changed, they went door to door to all of these businesses and told them the new rules, which was awesome. And and Joe's going like that. And that's that's very, very helpful. Okay. Well, thanks. That was the discussion. And I'll probably come back. Okay, now we have a closed session.
We have two closed sessions. You'll be going in for public employment, employee appointment title City Clerk and public employee appointment title City Manager.
And I just want to say thank you for not making it a six-hour meeting.
Amen.
Okay, we're not done yet.
So let me just clarify. So we, do we end out of this Zoom and sign into the other Zoom? And then do we sign back into this Zoom to finish the meeting?
Yes, Cindy.
Okay, perfect.
But but if they don't want, if they want to check out early instead of having to come back on, we can adjourn the meeting and they don't have to be still on the line, do they, and get back on again?
For them not to log back into Zoom here when we come out to report out.
We just need, we we just need someone to report out any action.
Okay, so you wouldn't need to come back after after that, if you don't want. Okay, good night, Tony.
Denise will report out.
Okay.
Are we back? Okay, we're back after close session.
There is no reportable action.
Okay, meeting adjourned.
Good night, Tony again.
Yeah.